Yesterday was a fight.
Yeah, no, it was already voted over.
Madam Clerk, are you ready?
Yes.
Good morning. It is nine AM on Tuesday, March twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, and I call this regularly scheduled business meeting of the Bonner County Board of Commissioners to order. For the record, I am Chairman Luke Amen and Commissioner Asia Williams and Stephen Bradshaw are also present. Please rise for Ms. Charlene Wright to give our invocation.
Father, we just invite your presence here now. And in your word, you said, trust in the Lord with all your heart and don't lean on your own understanding. In all your ways, acknowledge him and he will direct your path. And so, Lord, we're acknowledging you. We're grateful for this amazing, beautiful place that you've called each one of us to live. And so we invite your presence here today. And I pray for the spirit of wisdom, the spirit of discernment, the spirit of counsel and strength, knowledge and the fear of the Lord to be released on all of us that live here. Thank you, Father, for humble hearts. And I pray for listening ears, but not only listening ears, but ears that hear. I pray, God, that the only agenda that we go forth would be your agenda. Thank you, God, that as each one, each city that is involved here are like a different child. And I pray that the commissioners would have your heart and your mind for each one and that they would know what your will is for each. And God, where there's been broken trusts and broken relationships in the past, I ask that you release the spirit of reconciliation to see that we're all here. We have hearts that love this place. And I pray that where there's been decisions in the past that haven't been made right, that they would have the wisdom to right those wrongs and to turn things around. God, I just release shalom peace, the peace that would drive out chaos and confusion in northern Idaho, in Bonner County, and in every one of the cities around. We speak shalom peace. And so we just release that wisdom today and we release just hearts of love for you and your love for us. We thank you in Jesus's name.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The purpose of the regular business meeting is for the Board of County Commissioners to conduct the business of Bonner County publicly. Regular business meetings do not constitute public hearings or in public has the right to be heard on every agendized item. However, at the discretion of the chair, everyone may be afforded an opportunity to speak on a particular issue if recognized by the chair. Any unrecognized comments or disruptive behavior will be grounds for removal from the board meeting by the chair and may subject the person being removed to criminal prosecution according to law. The purpose for the public comment segment of the Board of County Commissioners Business Meeting is to enable citizens with issues or concerns which they wish to bring to the board's attention and afford an opportunity for consideration on a future agenda for possible board action. The board will not engage in dialogue with the presenter during this session, but rather may choose to schedule the presenter's topic for a board consideration at a future business meeting. Questions may be directed to individual board members for the purpose of clarifying issues or to obtain additional information for the purpose of scheduling the matter for a future business meeting. However, no action will be taken on any issue or concern brought to the board's attention during this session. The chair will not entertain, under any circumstances, comments derogatory in nature toward any board member, staff member, elected official, or member of the public. Our first order of business today is to adopt the Order of Agenda.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the Order of Agenda as presented.
A second motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams? Commissioner O'Mat?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries. Our next agendized item is the consent agenda.
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
That second tap.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion amongst the Board of County Commissioners? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Mat?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries. And for those that are interested, the expenditures over five thousand for today's business meeting are for these first three items are for the sheriff. And it is all for bulletproof vests, which are fourteen thousand, four hundred eighty-seven dollars, ninety-eight cents. And the second item is a steamer for the kitchen for eleven thousand, five hundred seventy-five dollars. Our next agendized item is with Tyson Lewis of Planning. Or Mr. Travis Poller of Planning. I have final plat SS zero 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 eight dash twenty-two. Yes, sir. Glad to have you.
Travis Hyler, Planning Department, for the record. So we're here for a final plat of SS zero 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 eight dash two-two replata of Reynolds Estates. This is a short plat dividing lot one of Reynolds Estates into three residential lots. Assured drain field easement was also revised and reflected on the plat that affect lot two and three of Reynolds Estates. Therefore, lot two and three of Reynolds.
How about some audio there, folk?
Technology. Would you mute all of the people that are there and then see if you can address the technology issues, actually?
Right now, I can hear you just fine, so I'm not sure.
Thank you. Thank you, people, but let's. I will handle this. It is nine oh seven. I'm gonna take a recess to go check with technology to make sure that the people have access online.
Talking louder won't help Zoom, will it?
So it's a user issue, not a problem.
It'd be louder silence.
Madam Clerk, are you ready?
Yes.
It is nine oh eight and we have verified with the technology department that the audio is working and we are returning. Please continue, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. To continue, the property is a zone recreation to meet the requirements of that zone. The property is served by Selkirk Fire District and the Vista Utilities. The property is accessed off Green Bay Road, which is an eighty-foot wide United States Forest Service Zone, public right of way. The preliminary plat was approved by the Bonner County Planning Department on July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The parcel is located in a portion of section twenty-two township fifty-six north, range one west, Boise, Meridian, Bonner County, Idaho. The conditions of approval for SS zero 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 eight dash two-two replata Reynolds Estates have been completed. The notes and easements required for plat approval are shown on the final plat.
I have moved to approve this project file SS zero 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 eight dash two-two replata of Reynolds Estates. Authorizes chair to sign the final plat as presented.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion amongst the Board of County Commissioners?
Did this have a legal review since it's on your actual memo?
I do not know.
Yes.
What was that, Madam Clerk?
There was legal review email attached to the item.
There's nothing.
Is that Justice Services that you're looking at, Ms. Schoeffel? We're looking at the memorandum, but we. Do we normally review? Do we send every final plat to Mr. Wilson for review? Is that the standard? I was of the understanding that that is not.
No, no, we don't. Oh, these are, unless there's some unique question about them, if they're just routine, we don't typically, I don't typically get involved in these at that level.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
Chairman, I believe it's, I think it's a copy over from our template or memos. That's why it's on there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. So there is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or deliberation amongst the Board of Commissioners? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Mat?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries. Thank you, sir. Our next agendized items are with Director Stoltz of Justice Services.
Morning, Commissioners. Ron Stoltz, Director of Justice Services, for the record. Have two items for you this morning. The first one is a budget adjustment. Justice Services received money from Boundary County, Idaho, and Lincoln County, Montana, as well as the Cooney Tribe of Idaho and Idaho Department of Juvenile Corrections for housing juveniles in the Bonner County Juvenile Detention Center each fiscal year. We received this past year unanticipated revenue from these contracts in the amount of thirty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars for a total of fifty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars that was collected on contract. This is just simply asking that we allocate those funds in the line items so that they can be utilized primarily in the form of a budget things for overtime and some previously approved equity adjustments.
Based upon the information before us, I move to approve Resolution twenty-four twenty-five, ordering the clerk to schedule revenue in the juvenile detention FY twenty-three twenty-four budget. Revenue account number ending four nine nine zero, juvenile detention billing for use as additional funding for juvenile detention. FY twenty-three twenty-four budget account ending six zero six zero, salaries full time in the amount of twelve thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and for use as additional funding for probation services. FY twenty-three twenty-four budget account ending six zero six zero, salaries full time, the amount of twenty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars. This adjustment is due to receipt of unanticipated revenue received from contracts for housing juvenile offenders in Bonner County Juvenile Detention Center.
I would second that.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this agendized item?
None.
Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Mat?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Second item is the ACI semi-annual heating and cooling maintenance agreement for FY twenty-four twenty-five. It's recommended that the Board of Commissioners approve the ACI agreement for the term of one year, which would be April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four to April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five, at a cost of eight hundred and seventy-five dollars semi-annually, with the total being one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars total for the maintenance service for the heating and cooling systems located on Bonner County Justice Services Building. Now, this is renewal of an ongoing contract we've had for many years and there is no increase from the previous years.
We should sign that quick.
Yeah, hurry up.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, something that didn't go up.
Right, exactly.
I moved to approve the ACI agreement for FY twenty-four twenty-five for the term of one year to perform maintenance services in the Justice Services Building at a cost of eight hundred and seventy-five dollars semi-annually.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or deliberation on this agendized item? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Mat?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries. Thank you, Director. Our next agendized item is with Engineer Mulder of Roden Bridge.
Good morning. Item number one today, Roden Bridge is requesting approval to advertise for bids for the procurement of magnesium chloride, which is an annual procurement. We use magnesium chloride to stabilize our gravel roads. It helps to keep the material on the road so that the road doesn't need to be rebuilt as soon and reduces dust. We use about four thousand tons of that per year and are anticipating to get that same amount this year, which is enough to treat approximately four hundred miles of gravel roadway with a single application. Some roads receive double and triple applications for higher traffic volumes.
I move to approve the notice of advertisement for the two thousand and twenty-four magnesium chloride.
I'd second that.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or deliberation amongst the Board of Commissioners?
None.
Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Mat?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries.
Item number two, we are also seeking the board's approval to advertise for bids for the Bonner County Asphalt Projects of two thousand and twenty-four. This project will seek to place new asphalt on Sunnyside Road from the end of the existing asphalt in the forty-three hundred block and extend that to the end of county maintenance at Cedar Drive, which is approximately one point seven five miles further down the road. And we will also would like to place asphalt on several intersection aprons and bridge aprons and some driveway aprons in the Blanchard area, which need to be addressed after our gravel rebuilds in that community last year.
All right, I move to approve this notice of advertisements for the Bonner County Asphalt Projects for two thousand and twenty-four.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any deliberation amongst the board?
I have none.
Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Mat?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mulder. Our next agendized item will be with emergency management and the bonfire program and our forester, Mr. Nick Zoller.
Morning, Commissioners. Nick Zoller, Fire Mitigation Program Manager, for the record. Today I have two agendized items. Number one, the attached contract is between Bonner County and Three Seas Excavation to provide project work for the treatment and or removal of hazardous wildland fuels at locations and compliance with specifications for the bonfire program. There will be no county match as this contract will be funded from an IDL Department of Lands grant. I would recommend the Board of County Commissioners accept and sign the contract for professional services between Bonner County and Three Seas Excavation.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve and sign the contract for hazardous fuels treatment between Bonner County and Three Seas Excavation for project work on the bonfire program funded by an Idaho Department of Lands grant with no county match.
I would second that.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any deliberation amongst the Board of Commissioners? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Mat?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries.
Always nice to see the state tax dollars coming back home.
Item number two, the attached contract is between Bonner County and Copper Smith Enterprises LLC to provide project work for the treatment and land or removal of hazardous wildland fuels at compliance with specifications for the bonfire program. There will be no county match as this contract will be funded from an IDL Department of Lands grant. I would recommend the Board of County Commissioners accept and sign the contract for professional services between Bonner County and Cooper Smith Enterprises LLC.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve and sign the contract for hazardous fuels treatment between Bonner County and Copper Smith Enterprises LLC for project work on the bonfire program funded by Idaho Department of Lands grant with no county match.
Can I amend the motion? It's Bonner County and Cooper Smith. There's a typo in the motion that has a different name. We forgot an O.
It's, well, the.
The motion has to be correct. He said Copper Smith, the name.
That's correct, and that's the same thing that the contract says. I will step down from the chair to second the motion, but.
Yeah, it's.
I mispronounced it, sorry.
Can we clarify? Because what I'm saying is the motion that Commissioner Bradshaw made states the wrong name, and so I'm trying to amend the motion to use the correct name in the motion, which is.
Name did I use?
The name that's written there is Copper Smith. You said what's there, but the name of the company, yes, never mind.
That, for the purpose of deliberation, it is my understanding and from reading that it says for the contractor, Cody Copper Smith. It also says on the first page of the contract, this contract is made by and between Bonner County herein after referred to as county and Copper Smith Enterprises. Is there any further deliberation?
I have none.
Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Mat?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
Our next agendized item is a discussion regarding using AI drone technology to assist in planning activities such as building location permits. Commissioner Williams?
Okay, so I've been contacted by a number of people in the community regarding the use of drones over private property. I did do a little bit of research. Idaho does have state law regarding the use of drones and their specific application is for hunting. You can't use it for harassing, locating game animal, game birds, or fur-bearing animals. Some people have asked the question of, is the use of drones over private property a form of the county harassing them? They have commented on the airspace that is owned by an individual and then further, the other comment I received was, given that when we are going to have our properties assessed, we are giving permission to come on our property. So if we're not doing that for a drone, is the county missing a step in using drone to address planning or and or like something that would impact our taxes? And so there are a few people that did ask for this discussion. I think Brandon Kramer was one of them. And Dmitry Borisov, you asked me that question too, so I wanted to give those people that brought it up an opportunity to explain what their concern is to see, does the county need to do something as it relates to drone activity over private property? There have been people saying they've that it's lower than five hundred feet, so it is essentially, we are on someone's property and in the minds of some people, it's without the permission of the property owner and does that qualify?
Can I, oh, can I chime in here real quick?
Sure.
I just, I don't know if there's a miscommunication or difference of opinion on the facts, whatever, but I know for a fact that this was an issue that was at least approached in the planning department a few years ago and I cited the appropriate statute with them and since that time, we haven't utilized drones in the planning department at all. We get our aerial imagery from the planning department from pictometry, so we're not using drones. I don't, I don't, just don't know where the accusation came from, but as far as I know, and maybe Jake could chime in too if he's in the room, but the planning department doesn't use drones at all.
Mr. Wilson, could you help me to understand then? So are you suggesting that the planning department does not use drones?
I mean, yeah, that's, I mean, unless Jake is there and he's been doing that without telling me, and I know he hasn't, so. You know, because the reason I know this so is because there was a, I'd say it was probably three, four years ago. Some, one of the compliance guys asked about whether it was viable or not. And I looked at the law. The law on drone usage in Idaho is very, very restrictive. And so my conclusion at that time was that it would be inappropriate to use drones for any sort of planning purpose. And so we just, it, since then, it's been a standing rule that it doesn't happen. And it never did happen before that, but that was the first time it was raised.
I can clarify that.
Phil, I, so I didn't put this as an action item, but a discussion item be on purpose because some people are saying that they felt that that was being used. And I'm aware of what you're talking about, that the county has a position on it. So this was an opportunity for people to address their concerns as it relates and hear the county position because it was a specific request, because I can't say, yes, there was a drone used or no, a drone wasn't used, but I wanted the part of this meeting is to allow the people to address the commissioners and this was a concern by more than one person that was brought forward.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to give, you know, the input that I had on it and try to help provide that information. So, but people have other contributions they want to make, go for it.
And so on this one, it's if someone has a contribution about drone use, because this has come up. So Dmitry was one of the people that asked.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have a Dmitry Borisov, resident of Bonner County. I have a, excuse me, real life example. One of my neighbors is doing a remodeling on his house. And the house is quite away from the main road. And then suddenly he receives the bill from the county with the fine and with the fee to be paid for remodels that he's conducting on his property. And other neighbors before that, a few days before he received the bill, witnessed drone flying over our properties. So the, it seems to be really too much of a coincidence when the drone flies over property and a few days later, my neighbor receives the fine and the application for a permit from the county.
So am I to understand, Mr. Borisov, you're alleging that there was a drone piloted by Bonner County that overflew your neighborhood?
According to eyewitnesses that live on my road, they say there was a drone flying over our properties. And a few days later, one of my neighbors had received a notice from the county. Those are the facts.
And so do you think that it's, is there an option for that neighbor to submit their penalty to the county so that we can see what happened? Because from what we're hearing from Bill is we're not doing drones and that's the recommendation. But if we are, we need to have an opportunity to say what our concern is, but also to vet out if that's happening, to address that.
I would ask them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I see that we've got Assessor Engelhardt, Mr. Volley.
I'm sorry, can you wait a second? Because this was my agendized item and when I started, I was offering before going to elected officials, the people that brought it up. And so is Kramer, so are the hands up related to the drone item? Are you guys just saving your place in line? Rick, Christine? Rick, Christine?
I'm just saving my place in line.
Okay. All right, is Brandon Kramer online? Oh, okay, all right, so go ahead, uh.
Thank you, Dennis Singleheart, assessor for Bonner County. And Asia's opening statement said, there appeared to be some concern from constituents about using drones for assessment and stuff like that. And I can tell you that the assessor's office does not use drones. We would never use drones as far as, as long as I'm there, we, there's no need to use drones. We have other resources. You all know that under sixty-three, uh, three fourteen, we are mandated by the state to do a continuous reappraisal of properties in. In Bonner County. We do twenty percent a year, so we do all within five years. We send out notices that we're coming out to do inspections, or we'd like to come out and do inspections in those areas. We get about fifty percent back with authorization to come onto the property. Obviously fifty percent don't, but that doesn't relieve us of our statutory responsibility to do. Uh, market value appraisals of those properties. So we can do that in a number of ways. We can stand in public, public areas and take photographs or make observations and notes. We can. Be on private property where we have permission to be and observe those, uh, observe those things. We can talk to people. We're willing to talk about their visits to those properties, talking about citizens. Uh, and we also have uh, uh, a. Eagle view, which is a flyover service that the county contracts for. We don't need drones. Drones are a big expense. They're complicated. We, if we had drones, we'd have to hire people. I don't, I'd much rather have a view of your property from ten thousand feet than I would from a five hundred foot elevation buzzing around your house, scaring your animals and children. So as far as I'm, as long as I'm there, there's not going to be any drones. There's no need for it.
Sounds good.
Mister Engelhardt? Could I just ask you a question about that? So am I to understand then? That this. Pictography. I don't know if I got the term that our attorney, Mister Wilson, used. So that is a tool with technology. That allows your office to perform its statutorily required duties according to Idaho Code sixty-three dash three one four.
Correct. Correct, and, and also sixty-three, four oh nine, which requires the assessor to maintain plot maps or plant maps. And uh, in administrative code, section two fourteen, I believe it is. Uh, subsection two B, they're not ignorant of the use of aerial photography to develop those plot maps. They just make a requirement that if you do use aerial photography, that you scale. Uh, recalculate the scale and then post that on the, on the map as well, so. It's not an uncommon use for, for, to meet those statutory requirements.
Okay, so for those who reached out to me on the use of drones, you've heard the county's uh, position on that. If you have an example that you want to put forward, send the, not just the example, but um, what you're using to evidence that it was the county doing that. So that we can address it um, individually, since as a county, we have taken a position that we're not supposed to be using drone activity.
So Commissioner Asia, uh, talking about the drones. And listen to this, um, everybody and their neighbor has a drone nowadays, except me. And so it makes me think, it's like, well, do you have a disrental neighbor to fly? A drone over a neighbor's property and then report it to the.
That's definitely, that's definitely something that probably could happen. I just, I just want to GIS, how do we get GIS then? We don't use drones.
Uh, that's an excellent question, Mister Bowling. It's good that.
Can I, can I pause for a second? Because my agenda item was about drones. And it's, I'm not asking about GIS. It was specifically the request of community members. So I don't, what's happening is you're pulling to a, a different topic. If we want to address G I, GIS, I want him to be able to answer that, but I also want to stick to that agenda item because that was a specific request. Um, and my, my agenda item is only that. It's definitely an option to have that, but I don't think it's, it's not a response to drones.
Well. Assessor Engelhardt?
Yeah, if I've heard Mister Moore. If I heard his, his comments correctly. Uh, yes, I suppose it is possible that someone with a drone could. Fly over their house and send that information, but since I've been there, been in the office, I've never had anybody approach.
Don't have a top secret envelope under your door with drone activity?
No, just, just for commissioners' properties. But we, we don't have, and, and quite frankly, I don't think I would, I, I would be uh. Willing to accept that kind of information.
Okay, thank you. All right. So I think that addresses the, the topic that I put on.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Williams. As this information has been brought forward, I think it is the duty. Of this board to accurately portray the practices of Bonner County, and as such. I would appreciate Director Bowling coming forward and talking about. Some of those applications, and I believe that uh, Commissioner Bradshaw has. A matter, so Mister Bowling.
Um, so I guess your question is, how do we do GIS without drones? So uh, GIS and aerial photography has been around uh, much longer than drones have been. And so uh, GIS has always historically used aerial photography. So it's, it's an actual plane flying at anywhere from five thousand to twenty thousand feet. We don't use drones. It's not really practical to use drones. Most drones, the battery life is about twenty minutes on it. So for us to do a complete countywide flyover with a drone, take us half a year to do.
Right.
So Mister Bowling, just one, just for clarification, just so that I fully understand. So does Bonner County GIS use drones in any capacity?
No. And, and neither do we use AI technology.
Thank you, Mister Bowling. Uh. Commissioner Bradshaw, did you have something to add?
Yeah, uh, FAA regulations for aircraft. Is one thousand feet over populated areas. Five hundred feet over. Rural areas. That's why the FAA limit on drones is four hundred feet above ground. Uh, state code twenty-one dash two thirteen two A. No person, entity, or state agency. Shall use an unmanned aircraft system to intentionally conduct surveillance of. Gather evidence or collect information about or photographically or electronically records. Specifically targeted persons or specifically targeted private property, including but not limited to. Individual or dwelling owned by an individual and such dwellings. Curtage. Without such individual's written consent, a farm, dairy ranch, or other agricultural industry or commercial or industrial property without the written consent of the property owner. No person, entity, or local, state, or federal agency shall use an unmanned aircraft system to photograph or otherwise record an individual. Without such individual's written consent for the purpose of publishing or otherwise publicly disseminating such photograph or recording. There is a carve out for sheriff's office and law enforcement to use drones. The only drones owned by Bonner County are in the possession of the SO. So. Uh, that should cure everybody's fear about the county using drones for any reason, because it, it state law prohibits it. So any drone you see is probably. Privately owned. I bought all my grandkids drones for Christmas two years ago, decided. I'd test it out in the driveway and I have no idea where that one is.
I'm gonna correct, we do have a drone outside of sheriff's office in our risk manager's office. We did buy a drone.
So that might be the one that went over your house. I'm sure the battery's dead by now.
Alright, thank you. Our next portion of our agenda.
Would be public comment.
Public, oh, that's right there at the bottom. Public comment. Uh, for the purpose, before we get into public comment today, I am going to reread. Bonner County ordinance, because as of last week. We did have a presenter who showed up. Who was then accused of being related to me. We are not related. Uh, the public comment is pretty clear. The chair will not entertain under any circumstances comments derogatory in nature. Toward any board member, staff member, elected official, or member of the public. So when you approach the microphone. Please state your name, whether you are a county resident, and keep in mind that we have ordinance. And if you're an employee of Bonner County on the clock, please state that you are an employee of Bonner County on the clock. Our first. Our first.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have a discussion on that. It's, it, it is.
The discretion of the chair.
It, no, no, the discretion of the chair is being grossly manipulated here. You don't have the right to tell someone if you're on the clock here, you must disclose that, and you, it. With as much litigation that's, we're opening the doors to accept on this board. You looked right at a sheriff employee, which you've done that to her more than once. You can't just make rules to enforce. The way it states in the statute is. Your function as chair is not judge, jury, and decision maker of everything. It's to run the meeting. You've been told by legal that public comment exists, that ordinance has not changed. Just like you don't get to pick and choose who can speak off that list, you don't get to institute arbitrary rules within the meeting. That is not your scope. And it is not worth the litigation that you invite by singling out staff, because you've allowed. Staff to always give a comment, which they do. And we've accepted that that's reasonable in this meeting. That is not right for you to try and do that now, and I would urge there, there's no rule that says you can require somebody to do that.
Commissioner Williams. State law actually says that no political activities will be conducted. On taxpayer, using taxpayer funds. In addition, there is this publication that is known as the Bonner County Policy Manual. That has been published. So. There is not an arbitrary or capricious expectation. What there is. Is the idea that all Bonner County employees will honor state law. And that they will honor the Bonner County Policy Manual. Am I to understand that you don't believe that employees? Which I have not singled anyone out, but am I to understand that you're advocating that we don't follow the policy manual or state law?
So what I'm going to ask you to do is please provide the state rule. And then the Bonner County policy that says that if you are in a public meeting and you are an employee of the county. That you must disclose that.
This meeting is recessed for six minutes. Will I go get that law? I am happy to provide that. Yep, I'm gonna. Answering your question, Commissioner, I will be right back. Thank you for this opportunity for us to comply with state law.
Not that I know of. That'd be a Bill Wilson question. Yeah, or a legislator. Get with Scott or or Sodder. You know.
Dixon.
Or Sage Dixon. Yeah. So. But yeah, game cameras, things like that. I don't know. There's too much restriction on those.
Ms. Schoffel, are you ready?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Schoffel. It is nine forty-five and we are coming back out of recess. And I'll start with Idaho code and we did receive some. Written correspondence based upon the activities of certain elected officials. Uh, in regards to Idaho code seventy-four dash six zero four, neither a public entity. Nor any of its employees shall use nor shall public. Nor shall a public official you uh authorize or use public property. Or resources to advocate for or against a candidate or a ballot measure. And it is my understanding based upon the video evidence. That this did happen in this room, which I believe is a public room with public funds. And. We did receive counsel that this was not appropriate.
Actually, you didn't. And so I'm going to tell you first, that is not what happened when so.
I guess Bill was wrong.
Bill was not wrong. There wasn't an electioneering event. Mister Bradshaw declined to uh address an issue and the room was vacated. People sat and had a discourse wherein two people that happened to be elected were asked a specific question from a community member. You were advised by not just Bill, but also the clerk. That's not what was uh at issue. But the question, if that's what you came back with, then you inappropriately are telling. Employees, because what you went to get is a document to say that I have to state, I am working for Bonner County at this time. I'm on the clock. What you're actually trying to address is use of public for electioneering, which in fact you did do when you called your press release. Using our money to fly to Boise and come back. So don't, don't conflate the two. So what you just said was that a public speaker who wants to give a comment must tell you if they are on the clock. You did not come back with a rule, so therefore we cannot follow what you're requiring. This is specifically targeting your political opponents, which is now in the sphere of what you're talking about. You don't attack individuals because they are on the opposing side of your behaviors. The way you were instructed, public comment should go is we sit here and we listen to what people have to say.
Who was I instructed by, Commissioner?
You were instructed by our legal team to understand that public comment. Is not intended just for what you agree with, but it's the community's opportunity to address the board. You have been advised that if you don't like that, you need to change the county ordinance. County ordinance has not been changed. There is no requirement and you did not come back with a law that justifies. Your arbitrary decision that says people that are employed must state whether they are currently on the clock. So we should proceed with public comment and you should just apologize and say, I was wrong. I couldn't find that statute instead of wasting more of our time.
Commissioner Williams, I will now read from the Bonner County Personnel Policy and Procedure Manual, which. And. What the policy manual stated. Is under for policy four hundred, rules of employee conduct. And what it says is.
This is the same policy you wanted to get rid of, by the way, so we're gonna use it now.
Uh, that's interesting, but there's no record of that. And that is policy four hundred point three prohibited conduct. Employees of Bonner County shall not engage in political activities. Specifically campaigning for or against any candidate or ballot issue well on duty in public service. Then it says this rule shall not apply to elected officials. So you've got policy and you've got state.
You actually just confirmed that you're wrong and you're being stubborn by not accepting that you're wrong. Nobody is talking about politics. This is a business meeting. Where the purpose of the meeting is stated in our rule. To address the board and bring up issues that you would like to see on the next agenda. You are trying to use some way to identify individuals. Similar to your requirement that people online have to fill out a special form for you. That's different than the form here.
Similar to the legislature?
You're not bringing any rule forth. You're ju- you can't just say legislator, law and ordinance. That doesn't make you right. It actually, in this case, is making you wrong and more wrong. So just accept that you don't get to dictate that they must disclose. We have wasted more time than it would have taken that person to make a comment. So we need to move forward. You cannot require people to disclose this.
So returning, I will repeat, the purpose for the public comment segment of the Board of County Commissioners meeting. Is to enable citizens with issues or concerns which they wish to bring to the board's attention. And afford an opportunity for consideration on a future agenda for possible board action. The board will not engage in dialogue with the presenter during this session, but rather may choose to schedule the presentist topic. For board consideration at a future business meeting. Questions may be directed to individual board members for the purpose of clarifying issues or to obtain additional information. For the purpose of scheduling the matter for a future business meeting. However, no action will be taken on any issue or concern brought to the board's attention during this session. The chair will not entertain under any circumstances comments derogatory in nature toward any board member, staff member, elected official. Or a member of the public, which is ordinance four zero eight, which was published on five thirty-one, two thousand one. Our first. Public speaker today is Christine Logue.
Christine, unmute yourself.
Christine Logue.
I did receive a message from some people asking, how long was the break? Did technology? Inter- pause.
Our next public speaker.
Can we, can we address the question I just asked?
I am the chair and I, I, I understand that there's challenges with that, but. That is the way that state law works.
You, it's not as, it's not a state law and I'm trying to.
Actually, the state law says the chairman will preside. Our next.
No, I'm gonna pause you. You're making the meeting unnecessarily difficult. When we, when we. When we paused the meeting, something happened online and. Some people messaged and said, how long is the break? People have said when we take the break, they're not actually back in. So. Dave Bowman, can you hear? Are you online? Because that's what I'm just asking to clarify.
Yes, I can hear it. I'm online.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Our next public speaker will be Ms. Cheryl Messer.
Good morning.
Cheryl Messer for the record. And I am a. Bonner County resident. Government is to protect in- inalienable rights. That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men. Once government recognizes that there is a God and that he gives specific rights to man. It then becomes the duty of government to secure to every individual the practice of those God given rights. Thomas Jefferson affirmed that government is to declare and enforce only our natural rights and duties. And take none of them from us. U.S. District Court case in Ohio, reported by AP News on one sixteen twenty-four. An Ohio elected official's constitutional rights were violated when her colleagues on a county board of commissioners. Had her arrested for criticizing the sheriff. During a public meeting, a federal judge ruled Tuesday. Nicki Frenchco, the lone Republican on the three-member Trumbull County Board of Commissioners, was placed in handcuffs. By the sheriff's deputies at the commissioners meeting on July seventh, twenty twenty-two and charged. Under an Ohio law that makes it a misdemeanor to prevent or disrupt a lawful meeting. The law prohibits obstructive conduct or speech. Or speech that outrages the sensibilities of the group. The charge was later dropped. Frenchco subsequently filed a federal civil rights lawsuit. Saying she was ordered to leave the meeting and placed under arrest for exercising her First Amendment right to free speech. And that the sheriff's department lacked probable cause to charge her. U.S. District Judge Jay Philip Calabrese agreed. Here in America, we do not arrest our political opponents, the judge wrote. This case tests that longstanding norm. As well as our constitution's robust protections for free speech. That allow us to criticize our representatives and public officials. Not negative speech. Is unconstitutional. You prohibiting that? Calabrese.
Got an emergency exit right over here. I don't, I'm not sure what. There is one over there. I'm gonna go see what's going on. I don't know. Mister Bennett, are you ready to go? And Ms. Schoffel, are you ready to return?
Yes.
She's the clerk.
Yes, we're ready. Uh, technology's ready to go.
Technology, I don't know if Elisa's back up there. Lisa, are you back, ready to go?
Yes, I'm ready.
All right. It is ten fifty-seven and we are returning from a. Test of our fire alarm, which works exceedingly well.
Can I get some time back?
You will have the remaining ninety seconds. And that's, that's correct. Please proceed.
Calabrese ruled that the sheriff, two deputies and both county commissioners named in the lawsuit are personally liable for damages. The defendants are not entitled to immunity from damages, he wrote, because the law has long recognized that any reasonable official would know. That the First Amendment does not countenance the arrest of a person for engaging in protected speech. One of Frenchco's. Frenchco's attorneys said, we can't arrest each other because you disagree with them politically. Once you start down that slope, it's bad news for all of us. Who arrests someone for disturbing their own meeting? Here's another one. Well, this is in Acosta versus City of Costa Mesa. Willful disturbance of any lawful meeting must substantially impair the meeting by intentional conduct. In violation of implicit or explicit rules for the meeting. That violator knew or should have known. Legal scholars have supported the idea that the best way to respond to hateful or offensive speech. Is not to attempt to limit it, but instead to encourage more speech. For example, as Justice Louis Brandis famously wrote. If there be time to expose through discussion the falsehood and fallacies. To avert the evil by the processes of education. The remedy to be applied is more speech, not enforced silence. Whitney versus California. Two seven four, U.S. Three five seven and three seven seven nineteen twenty-seven. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Messer.
Give us our.
I, I, I have a point of order. Again, you skipped past my name on public comment and when you read the statute, it says citizens are. I do not hear in your statement when you're reading the rule that says, except if you're an elected official. And so. My description as being a citizen and resident of Bonner County afford me the right to speak during public comment. And you skipped past my name.
Did you vote on any of the items in this business meeting?
That doesn't change public comment.
You're here as a sitting elected commissioner.
And just like a chair can step down from the chair.
Not ours.
Well, I'm a member of the public and I can step down from my position to give a comment. I will point out, I will point out that this board allows every other elected official to come to this microphone when they want to speak.
And they are. They are not. Part of the Board of County Commissioners.
So is that what the rule says? Is that a rule?
Thank you for your observation.
Is that a rule?
Put this into writing and we will continue with the meeting. Thank you, Commissioner Williams.
What does put it into writing mean? You're gonna write a rule?
No, it means that we'll ask our legal counsel because our legal counsel does not like it. When uh, he's asked that we put things into writing and I intend to respect that opinion. So our next public speaker will be Mister Kevin Moore.
Kevin Moore for the record. Citizen Bonner County.
Can we stop and put his time back to three?
So yeah, you guys throw me off whatever, every dime, whatever, because I say I have things to dialogue. Then as I hear dialogue up here, then it makes me think of things to say. And so as we're talking about not wanting the citizens to politicize that uh working here, whatever. It reminds me that we all need to pay attention to the separation of church and state that's going on from a. A federal level, so we can keep that mind spontaneously. To me, this is very interesting. So now I'll go to what I was gonna say. Uh, we're on the campaign season now, whatever. We got some people here uh. Putting out some fevers here. And so a couple of years ago, uh, I was able to be part of a group of people that. Met over in Priest River Junior High School. And. Uh, there was a lot of dialogue there. There was some stuff that I'd like to bring out, but I'm probably not gonna make it, so I'm gonna go to the highlights or whatever. At the court, towards the end of the meeting, there was a gentleman that you guys were facing, because we were looking at you guys. And so. There was a gentleman on the right-hand side in the stadium in the seats, whatever. And he got up and asked, and I'm paraphrasing because I don't have a recording of this. He said. Will you guys give a yea or nay if there was anything questionable that you would be willing to bring in a inquiry? Somebody for inquiry. And to my recollection, everybody on that stage or whatever affirmed that yes, if there was something unseemly, they would bring it for us. So um, I got three issues, whatever. We're still uh, hopefully you guys use the word audit. I'm gonna use the word inquiry because I just like inquiry better. Uh, we're still dialoguing about the fair board or whatever and how we're gonna look or not look into the Darcy Smith thing. And so then another one, the one that you guys do not like to hear, verbatim. I'm still thinking that there's gonna be a. Peer group wanting to know exactly what laid out in that whole process web. Because it does affect the scenario now. Because of the monies that we paid and we're scrambling to pay for this and for that. And it also affects me, which whether my peer group cares or not or whatever, I am a citizen and. Under the Constitution of the United States or whatever, property rights and environmental law. I want my peer group to care about another cute little place of. A co- pure pristine Coca-Cola Creek feeding Coca-Cola Lake. And so. So another thing here to, to connect to that. And hopefully Mister Bill Wilson can tap into this too. There are laws in the book, but there's also laws of omission, sins of omission, laws of omission. And it's actually called willful disregard. And so as a person of authority, if you take an oath to the constitution, whatever, to. For the safety of the employees and the general public. Then when a citizen shows you that there are some complicated areas that are unsafe or have a hazard, a high hazard to them. Uh, then I would expect that they would want to step up and try to be ahead of the game, not let a worst case scenario develop.
Thank you, Mister Moore. Your time has expired and I have number one, the fair. Number two, verbatim. And number three, willful disregard, but I'm not sure what, what, for whom you're referencing for willful disregard. Are you, we're talking about your culver?
Yeah. And.
Thank you.
And these other things kind of fit, can fit into that too.
Thank you, Mister Moore. Uh, our next speaker is Ms. Amy Lunsford.
Amy Lunsford, for the record, I am a Bonner County citizen. Okay, so I completely missed the boat on Asia's agenda item about the drones. So the. These meetings are so crazy. I don't know. Do we get to stand up and talk? Do we not? Do we have to wait for public comment? Um. And so if I, if we could have like a cheat sheet on the verbiage saying that if. You know, and I wanted down the agenda item. Thank you for putting on the agenda. Um, that if this verbiage is listed, we get to come up and speak and have the back and forth. So the drones I brought up as a question, it was an article in the Daily Bee. Um, and it said that the Bonner County Planning Department is finding new ways to help ensure land owners are being properly assessed for their property taxes. So new ways is what drew me to the question. Are they gonna start using drones? What are they gonna use? Because apparently Eagleview is not new ways. It's old, old news. And um, really, why is it taking this long for somebody just to? Give me that simple answer. Um, it's been a while. And then uh, and the other bottom line is, is those questions are being asked because um, we don't trust our government. We don't trust it at this level. We don't trust it on, at the upper level. And um, I think it's good stewards for us to ask you these questions and it's, you know. Transparency for you to answer these questions. So I am thankful. That you put it on the agenda. I'm sorry I didn't stand up during the time, but like I said, I was confused. So if we could have, you know, a little cheat sheet for dummies, you know, maybe something color coded on the wall saying, you know. If this is. You know, listed, we can all stand up and talk outside our three-minute comment, but thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Lunsford. Our next speaker is Ms. Johnna Plant.
Johnna Plant Segal. The First Amendment to the Constitution protects the right of freedom of speech. This includes the right to criticize government officials without the fear of retaliation. And censorship or citizens' arrest. Merrifield versus Board of Commissioners. Where the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals. Said that the court ruled that citizens have the first amendment right to criticize elected officials, even if their comments are harsh and critical. White. Versus City of Norwalk, where the Second. Circuit Court said the court held that the city's restriction on the speaker's topic of discussion unconstitutional viewpoint discrimination. Baca were versus Marino Valley Unified School District. The court held that citizens have a right to criticize elected officials. And that the policy impermissibly restricts. and that the policy impermissibly restricted free speech by censoring certain types of speech based on its content. These cases underscore the importance of protecting citizens' rights to criticize and express disapproval of elected officials during public forums and meetings as guaranteed by the First Amendment of the United States Constitution. If you were and if you had been a true constitutional conservative, Commissioner Ammon and Bradshaw, from the beginning, you would have wanted to keep Zoom and not eliminate anybody's ability to participate in the meeting. You wouldn't be shutting down the other elected commissioner by not allowing her to explain her vote or communicate prior to the vote. You would be keeping items on the agenda she felt was county business because it is not your place to make a decision. What is county business or what is not? It's up to her as our elected official. And when we ask her to place something on agenda, she is doing her duty by placing it there to be discussed. We have a right to question when items are removed since many came to talk about these items. By the way, you still haven't answered Rick Kramer's only question the day you removed 21 items. What is county business to you? It does, again, it doesn't matter what you think county business. We are county and it's business. Since Rick got arrested for asking this question, again, we have to ask it. What is county business? If you had allowed and followed your constitution, you boys frustration by the crowd and by Dave Bowman wouldn't exist. No arrest would have happened to Dave because he would have been able to continue his comments in regards to the truth of what happened. And in the comments, you disrupted him and others who spoke. Diane Welly, she was trying to defend herself. He got up after her to defend her as well. But you didn't allow it and you got in his way. The next one, he just came and sat in a meeting and you arrested him. Shutting down our public right to speak has been very disruptive situation. And it's upset us all. The boy commissioners decisions have been a very direct slap of the face of the public who have been taking the time to come to give your, to give our answer.
Comments, Mrs. Plant.
Of course I have more, but I'll come back.
Johnna, what I view is what I heard in your speech. I think it does require an agenda item and you say if you want it or not. Okay. Discussion of the ordinance is the ordinance in conflict with the Constitution denying comments that are critical or negative views of an elected official for a discussion on is that not in line with our constitution? There's a different constitutional question that I was asked to place on the agenda regarding the oath taken by county elected officials. Is that oath?
Commissioner Williams, I'm going to step in and I'm going to draw us back to where you're at, which is.
Doing. She brought.
Question because I brought something.
She brought something.
This is what free speech is. This is what you don't understand. You just want to shut everybody down. It gets old.
Ms. Plant.
It's very frustrating.
Take your seat.
So you.
Don't tell me what to do. I'll take my seat because I want to, but you need to quit telling people what to do.
Thank you, Ms. Plant.
So the, the public comment, the public comment allows for people to bring forward issues that they want discussed. And that's what I'm doing. So it's in line with the rule. We don't have to have an argument.
I agree. The ordinance is very clear when it says the board will not engage in dialogue with the presenter during this session.
No, actually, except no, you're not reading the rest of it. You continually ignore that we can clarify issues to bring forward on to read the whole thing. Don't read the part.
Questions may be directed.
Taking more time.
Individual board members.
Taking more time away from me just clarifying whether or not I'm understanding her agenda item. I can't ask a clarifying question. That is exactly what I'm doing. You are not following the limited number of rules that you require of all of us and it's creating a problem. I'm just trying to get her agenda item.
Commissioner Williams, no matter how many times you attempt to speak over me, we are going to move forward.
No, we're not. We're not. We are not. We're not moving forward. She brought forward.
Get to filibuster this meeting as you have attempted for the last three. This is the time for the public to comment.
And she has a request for an agenda item.
You, you are next.
Pause because we need to understand her agenda item and that's what this section is for. So what I wrote is, is our ordinance denying the negativity or the negative or critical comments in line with our constitutional right based on what more than one of you presented that negativity is a constitutional right? And then the other one was, is our oath in of office in conflict with the constitution as well? Is that accurate? Thank you.
Ms. Jennifer Kramer is our next public speaker.
Jennifer Kramer, for the record, Bonner County resident. I have two things. I guess I would request that an agenda item be added to a future meeting to reconsider public comment after the agendized items. For obvious reasons, but just because the public has input and expertise that the three of you may not, may not, just because you can't be an expert on everything. And in particular for the B O C C added items, because those are non-standard, if you will. And so those are the ones that would promote the most discussion, I would think, and that are the most appropriate to hear public comment on. So I would like, excuse me, somebody to add that to a future agenda. And then my second comment is regarding Luke, I wrote the statute down in my book. I don't have it in front of me about political engagement, electioneering, whatever the terms are that were used. Somebody who works for the county that gets up and speaks is not doing what that statute said. They're two totally different things, as Asia pointed out. And so I guess in your reading of statute, which you often do, I would be careful to make sure that it applies to the topic at hand. And calling out someone or, or requiring that someone who's going to give public comment state that they work for the county is, is inappropriate, just as your Zoom form that says, or your Google form that says, if you want to speak online, you have to sign your name and your email address and what is your topic? And none of that is required for public comment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Kramer.
So I'll put that item on the agenda to address public comment after each agendized item to include B O C C items.
And our next public speaker will be Mrs. Susan Bowman.
Susan Bowman, for the record, I am a county resident. And I wanted to talk a little bit today, of course, about the First Amendment again, you guys' favorite subject, I know. First of all, again, thank you, Asia, for continuing to fight for our First Amendment. And I would like to address this whole concept of you saying that we can't say something derogatory. Okay, so that's in your little speech that you do. And what is the definition of derogatory? So you get to define what is derogatory and what is not derogatory. That is not what the First Amendment says. So we can, we can throw at you vehement, caustic, unpleasantly sharp attacks. The Supreme Court said we could do that. Our First Amendment says we can do that. And you just have to listen to that. So if you can't handle that, maybe don't do this job. And also Bonner County employees, their First Amendment rights don't stop at the door to this building. They have First Amendment rights. And I echo what Jennifer said, that electioneering has nothing to do. If they're getting up here and saying something that has to do with an election, that would be electioneering. But if they're getting up here and exercising their First Amendment rights, that's just their First Amendment rights and they are resident and they can do that as well. So again, what is derogatory? So I know that some of your trigger words, Luke, are manipulation, lies, tyranny. So idiot is another one of your trigger, trigger words. So now, why do you get to say what I get to say and can't say? You don't get to, because the First Amendment guarantees I can call you an idiot, a tyrant. I can say you manipulate. I can say you lie. Those are truths to me. Now, if you don't believe those truths, that's your, that's fine.
Is that what you're calling the board at this time, Mrs. Bowman?
You, oh, we are not engaging in dialogue. We are not engaging in dialogue.
Chairman, it is my job to follow ordinance. I'm just seeking clarification.
Your job to sit there and listen to what I'm saying because that's my First Amendment right to say anything I want. And no, you don't get to ask a clarifying question.
Put her back.
You're not. This is her time. It will continue.
You, you interrupted her time.
You do not get to.
No, I'm asking for the time to go back on the clock because you interrupted her time. Because when I waited to the end to discuss an agenda item, you engaged in what you just said you're not supposed to do with someone speaking because you didn't like it. You are the example of what you did and we can learn from it. We need to put her time back. This is part of what the community doesn't like because you're only doing it for certain people.
Yep.
The discrimination is palpable when it comes from, it's reasonable to do.
Well, since I have 15 seconds, yes, you have lied. Yes, you have manipulated. Yes, you are a tyrant and I'm going to add coward.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker will be Ms. Diane Welly, Mrs. Diane Welly.
Diane Welly, for the record, and I am a Bonner County resident. While any savings is good, it is disingenuous for members of the board, an insurance agent and an online local commissioner PR group to tout a savings by this board of $200,000 in the signing of an insurance procurement. This does not factor in penalties for early withdrawal of the old plan. In yesterday's meeting, the agent conceded that she didn't really know the cost of savings because she didn't know what the current county policy is. The number bragged is nowhere near accurate. She never even looked at our current policy and she admits that she has not valued all the properties as yet. It is the habit to announce huge savings where it doesn't exist. Combine that with the cost of at least two and likely three lawsuits against the county. We are far from being flush. Much of that failing falls squarely on the shoulders of this board.
Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Welly. Mr. Welly, you are next.
Daniel Welly, I am a Bonner County resident. It's been a little mind boggling here. I started off with something I want to say. I will say it. And it comes from history. It's recorded in the Acts of the Apostles, five verses thirty eight, thirty nine. It's a quote from a Jewish patriarch. His name is Gamaliel. Therefore, in the present case, I advise you, leave these men alone. Let them go. For if their purpose or activity is of human origin, it will fail. But if it is from God, you will not be able to stop these men. You will only find yourselves fighting against God. I would have thought you knew that.
Well, I'm well aware of that.
Yeah. And you're fighting against God.
Thank you for the word. It's a good word.
Secondly, the Idaho State Trooper was not be able to be here this morning. There was an emergency. Asia will invite him back. And next Commissioner Chat is going to be on March nineteenth with Michelle Strigati. She's a licensed mental therapist. So, and then on March sixteenth, Asia will discuss future guests. And one last thing, I've got a couple of seconds here. There are two words I want you two to consider very well. They are words applied to the law by a little guy in Germany in nineteen thirties and forties. Rech un ordnol. You have to look at the spirit of the law. You can't hammer away at the letter of the law. The way you're hammering away at the letter of the law for your purposes is getting a bit wearisome. Remember those two words and remember where they came from and who they were about. Rech un ordnol. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Welly. Our next public speaker will be Mr. Dmitri Borisov.
Sorry, I have a technical difficulty here. Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. Since ordinance allows me to, Dmitri Borisov, resident of Bonner County.
Thank you, Dmitri.
Ordinance allows, allows me to bring concerns and I have a few concerns for you Commissioners. More specifically, I want to address the actions of Commissioner Ammon and Commissioner Bradshaw, which have exposed our county to costly litigation. Already county have received notice of tort claim and it's clear that more litigation is coming. As taxpayers, we deserve answers and transparency. As taxpayers, we will, why should we foot the bill for the settlements and the attorney's fees resulting from decisions made by both of you against legal counsel's advice? I would, I would like to, to hear that answer. The other question. How much of our taxpayer funds do you participate spending to cover the cost of these ill considered choices? And can you provide us with the concrete figures? I would like to know how much money we will be spending. Any ideas? Or at least put on the agenda so we, so we know what to expect or what I appreciate it.
I'll put as an agenda item and have to get it cleared through legal since it's pending litigation to see what does the county owe the community with respect to the pending litigation?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Borisov. Our next speaker will be, is Dan here still? Dan Rose. So it won't be Mr. Rose. Our next public speaker will be Ms. Sheri DiValli.
Thank you, Sheri DiValli. I am a resident. I have several comment questions. My first one is I was wondering if there's a way we can move that timer up front so it's easier for the commenters. Instead of trying to make sure that they keep their time by looking over here, we can look at you. You know, if there's a way to put it up here. So that might be something to consider. I'd like you to look at that. My next question is about the data mining online. Is that being done for profit? Or is that just being done to harass the commenters because they have to go through Google and their data mining before they can comment online? So I'd like that addressed as well. And comment to your ordinance about political speech. Is it all public comment that's considered political speech or only that of Bonner County employees? Okay, because public comment in general is not political speech unless I stand up here and say vote for my candidate. That would be political speech, but I'm not doing that. So why would Bonner County employees? No, you're talking about political speech. You're not talking about public comment. There is a difference between the two. And if you don't think so, then let's talk about how you two keep talking about saving $200,000 on this insurance when there's a lot of factors not put in there and your figures aren't lining up. Would that be considered political speech to make it sound like you did such a good job and you're coming up on the primary?
It's math.
It's not math because it doesn't add up. Let's see, the Farm Bureau policy is $330,000. The former policy is $390,000. How does that save $200,000? You see the problem? Your math isn't lining up. Maybe you should have had a workshop that you could have interacted with the public and let the public bring all of these questions to you, like how are you figuring your math? Or is this political speech? Which is what it sounds like. I would also like to know who is paying for the defense for you and for you against the torts. You know, who is paying for that? Is that the county? Or are you paying for your own? I'd like that put on the agenda, please. And I think that's all I've got.
Thank you, Ms. DiValli. Our next public speaker is a Ms. Marla Jackson. Marla, I don't know who you are. Oh, some, that's, you don't have to. Are you just signed up? I just, I read the list prior to the, no problem, Ms. Jackson. Our next public speaker is a Mrs. Jennifer Arne.
Jennifer Arne, and yes, I am a Bonner County resident. And I'm addressing an issue that is near and dear to all Bonner County residents. The preservation of our few remaining public accesses to our public lands and waters. Senate Bill twelve fifty eight should be heard in the House Transportation and Defense Committee this Thursday at twelve thirty hour time, one thirty Boise time. And what's if you, I'm going to remind you of your eighth grade civics. We're about halfway through the bill. It's gone through the whole Senate. And it's in committee. This committee will hear Senator Herndon will present it and they'll hear about the, discuss the bill. And if they vote to pass it forward, then it will go on to the full house for a vote. And so it's very important that the committee members know right now how you feel about preserving our right of ways to our public lands and waters. Because if they vote no on it, then the bill dies right there. So they need to hear it and to know your feelings. And you can find their emails right there on the. right there on the Idaho legislation site, website. And they will not be taking remote testimony, so you can send in your written testimony and your emails. And then hopefully they'll recommend to pass it on to the full House, and then your, all of your um, House members will need to know how important this issue is to you.
Jennifer, and you're not just addressing the board, you're encouraging all members of Bonner County, right, to go and sign on?
Yes.
And so it's, that, that, I want to make that distinguished, because she's not just asking us, she's asking everyone to do that, um, to protect that.
And I did um, talk with um, the IAC's Legislative Committee, and part of their issue, it was a misunderstanding that um, they don't realize that the majority of these road vacations are private parties asking. I've, I um, talked to, did research with several counties and highway districts across the state, north and south, and most of the people in those offices were not aware of any cases where the county had initiated road vacations. It's generally the adjacent property owners who want that road. And of course, if it provides public access, they really want that road. Um, there are a few cases where things have needed to be adjusted a little bit, and, but by far, the majority of these things would have nothing to do with this bill. And this is for only proven access points, not wannabe public access points.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Arn. That has exhausted our list of residents who wrote uh, on our sign-in sheet physically.
Separation pages, they were two page.
I, yes, ma'am. You're on the second page. And our, our next, Ms. Schoeffel, if you will call off the uh, people who signed up in the fashion that is remarkably similar to the Idaho Legislature, which also uses Google Analytics.
Uh, Rick Kramer, Brandon Kramer, Christina Nicholas Anderson, and Dave Bowman.
Okay.
So I do have a comment on this electronic version. This has not been working for some people, which is why I wrote Christine's name on the paper document. And so I think it's reasonable for the board to address that issue. Because that was why I put her name down. So you have, she didn't call out Spencer Hutchings, it, I think it's reasonable to ask if he had difficulty with that electronic signup that you're requiring.
And Dave Bowman. All right, uh, I will go in the order as received, and it is unfortunate if Mr. Hutchings is having difficulties. Um, we did have the opportunity to hear from him yesterday. And
But he didn't have to sign up on that.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Williams.
Commissioner Amit, you advocate for a decorum that you're not displaying. I'm just simply saying, maybe we should ask if he had difficulty with the form. Because the reason I wrote Christine's name down is because she called me because she was having difficulty. You don't need to interject negativity unnecessarily. So can we just ask if he tried and he had an issue with it?
Is it my turn? Thank you, Commissioner. We will now proceed with the people who signed up in the fashion similar to that of the Legislature. Our first uh, speaker will be Mr. Rick Kramer.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, Luke, I'm here again, asking you to agendize what the result of the IAC meeting was in Boise, Idaho. This will make the fifth time that I've asked you to do that, and you failed to bring it uh, to agendize every week. The other thing I'd like to ask is uh, to make it an agenda item, Asia, maybe you can do this, to have the county commissioners explain to the public what county business is. What is your interpretation of county business? Because Luke removes items that are agendized that the public feel are business, and we don't get to speak on it. And he's determined, he's determining single-handedly what is county business and what isn't. And it's very unclear what county business is. So I would appreciate it very much if you would agendize that item and let the county public know what county business is, so we're not scratching our heads after every meeting. Thank you.
So would it be right to say it's a discussion review decision on what constitutes county business defined by each commissioner is what you're looking for?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Kramer, to save you some time, and Commissioner Williams, county business is actually defined in ordinance, which I have repeatedly stated. Uh, you can find it in chapter one dash two hundred, I believe, it might be section C, I don't actually have that.
That's okay, that's okay, Luke. But what you do, Luke, what you do is you remove items that are considered county business. If Commissioner Williams puts something on the agenda and you single-handedly remove it because you feel it's not county business. You're making this declaration, what is and what isn't county business. Let us hear it. She's agendized it because she's been asked to by the, by the people of the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Our next public speaker will be Mr. Brandon Kramer.
Of that one. Morning, can you hear me?
Mr. Kramer, that was Rick.
Oh, that was Rick.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Brandon Kramer.
Brandon Kramer, for the record, I'm a resident of Bonner County. Um, I missed most of the meeting today, unfortunately, due to, due to scheduling conflicts. That said, I would echo the Mr. Kramer's sentiments around county business to you, Luke, specifically. For the reason that the ordinance is, has no exclusionary items at all. It is very inclusive. In fact, it says that it will include anything that any commissioner, department head, or otherwise brings forward. So that being said, since it is so inclusionary, it would be useful for you to document and share with everyone your list of exclusions or what criteria you use to exclude items that are, that you would deem not to be county business. And I would say the same thing for you, Mr. Bradshaw, because you vote with Luke to remove these things regularly. So the both of you ought to come forward with what your list of exclusionary items are. I would very much appreciate that, and I would ask that you do it in some sort of timely manner, because you have no problems making the decisions around what you deem to be county business or not. So it shouldn't be some grand thought exercise that you have to go through to put that list together. The, the other thing that I'd like to say is that the insurance meeting that happened yesterday, by all measures, it appears that the insurance policy that was offered by Farm Bureau is in fact better than the insurance that we have today, which I am grateful for. I am saddened that there was as much controversy around it and as much um, to some extent secrecy. I have asked, I asked weeks before the meeting yesterday for what the policies were current that we have had with the Redmond broker, and then also what the proposal was from Farm Bureau. And no one was willing to provide it. Luke, you supposedly had access to these documents, I don't understand why you would not provide them. And it, it leaves what could have been a very positive thing with a sour taste in some of our mouths because of the way that you conducted yourself and the way that you handled it. So it, it wasn't transparent up until you tried to make a show of it with with Ms. Speakman coming and doing a presentation. Up until that point, there was no transparency at all for any of us. And I think that it's important that you acknowledge the fact that just because the, the ends don't always justify the means. And so you could have done a very good thing had you actually been transparent throughout the entire process, rather than trying to make a show of it for your own political gain at the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. That process was completely transparent.
I'm going to actually interrupt. I'm, I'm going to interrupt, I'm going to interrupt here because
No, you are not.
You read, you read rules, you're not supposed to interact with him, he gets his speech.
Time exhausted.
And, and you're attempting to do exactly what you don't allow, because then will you afford me the same opportunity?
No, Commissioner, I was speaking first. I know it's confusing, but I can speak for myself. And the allegations by some, including the member of this board who sits to my right, which would be you, that you did not receive the documents is false, not
And we are in this meeting, and we're in public comment, so let's not make it worse, let's go on to the next speaker.
Your dedication to not saving the taxpayer money is profound. Our next public speaker will be Ms. Christina Anderson. Christina? Nah, she bought it.
Good morning. Good morning. I just want Christina Nicholas Anderson for the record, I am a Bonner County resident. I just wanted to thank you for uh, allowing the public to comment the last uh, few meetings. And that's all I have to say. Have a good day.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson.
That was brutal.
And our last public speaker will be Mr. Dave Bowman.
Dave Bowman, Bonner County. Man, I, I'm following some pretty awesome public speakers this morning, they're tough acts to follow, but you two, uh, Amit and Bradshaw never never fail to give good material to work with, way more than I can address in three minutes. First of all, Luke, if it weren't for double standards, you would have no standard at all. I mean, it, it is utterly, it, it blows my mind. You, you, you are nothing but one double standard after another. When today was the first time I've ever heard Ms. Messer speak publicly without you snidely asking he's speaking as a private citizen or as a member of the sheriff's staff. This is the first time ever. Every time in the past, you have done that. But when someone like Matt Lynn Scott gets up there, who's, he's not technically an employee, but he's been on the planning commission and the zoning commission.
Mr. Bowman, I'm going to caution you that
Yeah, I don't need to be cautioned, just let me speak.
Mr. Bowman.
When he, when he gets, no, don't shut me down, Luke, you shut me down last week and again violated my First Amendment rights and my Article One under Idaho Constitution rights.
But go ahead.
Don't talk over me.
Well, at least he's letting you speak to him.
You have never once asked Mr. Lynn Scott whether or not he's speaking.
There will be no credit in time.
Credit back, the time, look, you guys
Why are we all talking at once here?
From this particular individual, you started speaking after you read that we're not supposed to interact. You're not clarifying it, so you don't get to draw his time down. We're not going to risk more tax money because you're intruding on his comment. Please, put it back to time technology, because we're not going to add this on another thing that we did wrong and as this board. We're not. So put it back to two minutes was when there was a discourse with the board. Please don't interrupt him.
Okay.
I don't want more lawsuits.
Get ahead, because they're, they're not going to these, these two that you could read about in Shuldenitsin and Orwell are not going to give me the time back, because the only way they can even attempt to look good is by silencing reasonable opposition, because that's the kind of tyrants they are. Now, I'm going to ask for an agenda item next week. I would like Bill Wilson to be put on the agenda to speak as to whether Commissioner Williams is or is not a member of this community and has the right, because I, she does have the right. But our tyrants up there want to keep her from speaking because she truly represents the people. And that needs to be spoken to in a public meeting. You guys call on Bill Wilson all the time. But now, all of a sudden, when it's something that you know isn't going to go your way, you want to do it in writing. And there is another double standard. And Luke, one more thing. I'm going to challenge you, do you think you could get through one without virtue signaling? Because that's all you got going for you, and everybody sees it. And uh, that's all I got.
I was going to give you thirty more seconds, but you want to keep going, Dave?
Yeah, I'll keep going.
Okay, you got thirty seconds. Go ahead, please continue.
Willis County is divided, and you have your camp that is very much against Sheriff Wheeler and Asia Williams. And you have the other camp, your camp, that is with yourself and for big development and more government, and it is, it is absolutely clear how this meeting runs. You decide that you, you don't want to have, you're not allowing dialogue. But then you jump in and have dialogue every time, and you did it to me, you've done it to like three other people before you, because your goal is to silence, that's because you have nothing going, you are an empty shell. Next year, let's see Dmitri Borisov and Brian Donkey sitting in those two seats.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Bowman, and it is ten forty-two. Ten forty-two, and this meeting is recessed, and we will read, we will come back out of recess for executive session at eleven AM as scheduled. Thank you for attendance.